Good morning, everyone. I'm Lisa Bender. I'm the president of the City Council. And before we start our official business, we have an important presentation. I will turn over the microphone to our Transportation and Public Works Chair, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. And yes, today was a really great day. It was Bike to Work Day. And I hope, whoo-hoo, Bike to Work. Woo-hoo, yes. So that's a really great thing that we celebrate. And then it'll be followed by May 19th. The week of May 19th will be the 59th Public Works Week. And so we celebrate that. We celebrate all the work that our multi-division department does to bring services to our citizens and makes Minneapolis tick. Of course, with all that activity, there's opportunity, lots of opportunity, to be recognized for excellent work. And sharing some of that excellent work and the awards that are recognizing this level of service will be our director, Robin Hutchinson.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Chair Reich. This is an honor to be standing up here to recognize Public Works Week next week. We hope that our colleagues and elected officials will come and visit us at our facilities, where we invite you in to say hello to the staff and see our work. It's been an incredible year for Public Works. And this is a moment where we can collectively recognize everything that has happened and all of the recognition that we have received nationally and locally. And I'm joined by so many Public Works colleagues, our directors and our staff, our award winners. And I'm going to just tell you quickly about some of the awards here. This year Kathleen Mayel won the Innovative Transportation Solutions Award from the Women's Transportation Seminar. They only issue one a year, and she was the winner. So congratulations. Don't clap yet if you're going to clap, if you're tempted. There's a lot of them, so just hang on. Nicollet Mall won numerous awards. This is led, this was led by Don Elwood and Rick Kreiser and a whole team of Public Works people. It won the 2018 Project of the Year from the American Public Works Association. That is a national award. There's six of them a year nationwide. It won the 2025 Plan Leadership Award from the Downtown Council. It won the Project of the Year Award from the City Engineers Association of Minnesota. It won an award for Landscape and Urban Redevelopment from Engineering News Record, which is a national publication. There are a lot of people here who contributed to that. Truly an amazing project. We won a Green Fleet Award from the Green Fleet Forum. Al Thumberg here to represent Fleet. We won a number of awards for the St. Anthony Bridge. This is the one where we rolled a prefabricated steel truss bridge into place over several BNSF tracks. It was like watching paint dry, but it was really cool. This particular bridge won an award from the American General Contractors Association for the Minnesota Bridge Award, from the Illinois Structural Society, from Finance and Commerce, from American Civil Engineers, ACEC, American Council of, ACEC, Civil Engineers. Yeah, thanks. The Minnesota Grand Award and the Minnesota Grand Conceptor Award. So five awards, and we've got a number of engineers in the room that worked on that project. Truly great. We won the U.S. Composting Council 2018 Organics Diversion of the Year. Kelly Kish is here. Huge work on her part. We won an award for the Samatara Crossing. It was named America's, one of America's 10 best new bikeways of 2018 for People for Bikes. Nathan Coster, Mesut Bolana, the whole traffic team worked so hard on that. And then we also had 60 Star Award winners within the Star Awards program for the city. So I want everyone to come up and join me, please. And if you've won an award, please, please grab it. Public Works, come up, please. I'm not standing up here by myself. You all did this work. Lisa Serny, City Engineer, huge round of applause, too. Fabio, please take your awards. And if we could take, can we take a picture? Public Works, every day we take pride in making Minneapolis better. That is our motto.
Thank you all so much. And I brag about our Public Works Department all the time. Director Hutchinson, thank you for your incredible leadership, all the division directors and staff. We have national leaders all throughout our Public Works Department. So thank you. I'm Lisa Bender. I'm the president of the Minneapolis City Council. And I'll call to order this regular meeting of the City Council for May 17th and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Worsami.
President.
Cunningham.
President.
Ellison.
President.
Goodman.
President.
Johnson is absent.
Palmasano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
Conno.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Fletcher.
Here.
President Bender.
Here.
There are 12 members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. And I'll note that Councilmember Johnson is absent today due to personal matters. And I will, let's see, sorry. We have the agenda for today's meeting before us. I believe that we have an amendment to, thank you, Councilmember Schrader. So I'll ask if there are any other amendments. I have an amendment to amend the agenda to include, under the order of adjournment, the legal matter relating to the rental license revocation for Steve Friends as part of the closed session. Are there any other amendments to the agenda? Seeing none, I will ask for a vote on that amendment. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. That carries, and the agenda is amended as adopted. Next, we have the minutes from our made third meeting for acceptance. May I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in approval, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Those minutes are accepted. And finally, we have the referrals of petitions, communications, and reports to the proper committees. May I have a motion for that, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in approval, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. That carries, and those referrals are made. The next order of business is the reports of our standing committees. I'll note that I'm still getting set up here, so I'll ask for Councilmember Schrader's help if anyone has comments in speaker management as we go along. So the first order of business under reports of our standing committees is the report of the Committee of the Whole presented by the Chair, Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Committee of the Whole brings forward one item today, which is the approval of four appointments to the Race Equity Community Advisory Committee, or RECA, and I move approval. Those appointees are Juhi Pompland, Seat 1; Ward 1, Seat Terrence Anderson, Seat 4;
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
Ward 4, Kunani Omar, Seat 5; Ward 5; and approving the council appointment of Samantha Priestenson,
That carries, and that report is adopted. Next, we have the report of the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee presented by the Chair, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President.
Seat 10; Ward 10, for two-year terms beginning May 1st, 2018, ending April 30th, 2020.
The Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing nine items forward for approval today. Item number one, I'm going to move to postpone one cycle, so Councilmember Johnson is back,
And I move approval of that, those items.
and he will be able to address some of the concerns that have been raised in the interim.
Council Vice President has moved the committee report.
Item number two is some changes to our building permit fee ordinance.
I think several of us are having some issues with speaker management, so I'll just ask
Item three is the liquor license approvals.
folks to use their tags.
Four are liquor license renewals.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. Five are the gambling license approvals. I have someone for the Race Equity Advisory Committee from my ward, but it took until And six is accepting a grant from deed. Item seven, our contract amendments to our Great Streets Business Support Grants. this morning in order to get it confirmed. So I'll be bringing it forward in the next cycle. This is allowing them to have a little bit more time. I think that's the last appointment. I'm super excited about this young woman that we're going to appoint, who works with Item eight is appointments to the Upper Harbor Terminal Community Planning and Engagement former Mayor Sharon Salzberg, and so really excited about it. Committee. And then item number nine is changing the name of that committee and to be more inclusive. We'll bring it forward soon.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? I am set up now.
With that, I will move items two through nine for approval this morning and move to
Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
postpone item number one.
Aye.
Thank you.
Schrader.
Councilmember Goodman has moved to postpone item one and moved the other items from the
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
EDRS committee report.
Aye.
Ellison.
Is there any discussion on those items?
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon. Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes on the report, except for item number six, which has 11 ayes in one day.
That carries, and those items are adopted. The next report is from the Intergovernmental Relations Committee presented by the Vice Chair, Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Intergovernmental Relations Committee brings forward four items today. Item number one and two are contract amendments for federal representation services. Item number three is the appointment of Councilmember Palmasano to the MSP Noise Oversight Committee. And item number four is a resolution supporting passage of Medicare for All Act. I move approval of all these items.
Council Vice President has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and that report is adopted. Sorry for the interruption. So those items carry, and those are adopted. The next report is from the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee. That will be given by the committee chair, Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. The Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee brings forward five items for approval today. The first is the Neighborhoods 2020 Framework Recommendations. I will be moving to delete 1.1. And 1.2 is a staff direction. The item number two is mayoral and council appointments to the Violence Prevention Steering Committee. Number three is gift acceptance from the Metropolitan State University of, excuse me, facilities for the Urban Scholars Program. Number four is authorization, submitting of an application to the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services First Responder Comprehensive Addiction and Recovery Act Grant. And number five is 2019 Urban Scholars Program funding from partner organizations. I move to delete 1.1 and move approval of 1.2 through item number five.
Councilmember Cunningham has moved the committee report. I anticipate there's likely some discussion on item one, so I think what I'll do is suggest that we pull that item to come back to and go ahead and ask the clerk to please call the roll on items two through five. I'll pause and see if there's any discussion on items two through five. Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes on the report, except for item number six, which has 11 ayes in one day.
That carries, and those items are adopted. The next report is from the Intergovernmental Relations Committee presented by the Vice Chair, Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Intergovernmental Relations Committee brings forward four items today. Item number one and two are contract amendments for federal representation services. Item number three is the appointment of Councilmember Palmasano to the MSP Noise Oversight Committee. And item number four is a resolution supporting passage of Medicare for All Act. I move approval of all these items.
Council Vice President has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and that report is adopted. Sorry for the interruption. So those items carry, and those are adopted. The next report is from the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee. That will be given by the committee chair, Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. The Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee brings forward five items for approval today. The first is the Neighborhoods 2020 Framework Recommendations. I will be moving to delete 1.1. And 1.2 is a staff direction. The item number two is mayoral and council appointments to the Violence Prevention Steering Committee. Number three is gift acceptance from the Metropolitan State University of, excuse me, facilities for the Urban Scholars Program. Number four is authorization, submitting of an application to the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services First Responder Comprehensive Addiction and Recovery Act Grant. And number five is 2019 Urban Scholars Program funding from partner organizations. I move to delete 1.1 and move approval of 1.2 through item number five.
Councilmember Cunningham has moved the committee report. I anticipate there's likely some discussion on item one, so I think what I'll do is suggest that we pull that item to come back to and go ahead and ask the clerk to please call the roll on items two through five. I'll pause and see if there's any discussion on items two through five. Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
Those items carry and are adopted, and that returns us back to item number one, which was the Neighborhoods 2020 Framework Recommendations. The item 1.1, that Councilmember Cunningham referred to, was a staff direction, which the Chair has moved to delete. And then the item 2.2 is consideration of the actual framework that was coming to us as, oh, sorry. It's actually a second staff direction, right, which the Chair is moving forward. And so I see Councilmember Gordon in queue. Mr. Chair, do you want to say anything before we kind of go forward, which would be, Councilmember Gordon is next in queue?
Thank you, Madam President. I will go ahead and defer to Councilmember Gordon, because I know he's bringing forward some, a new resolution for consideration, and then I'll speak to that item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'll just note as well that the clerk has passed out a new staff direction, which incorporates some of the elements from things that were discussed at committee, and that is from Councilmembers Cunningham, Palmasano, Gordon, and myself. And so I'll recognize Councilmember Gordon, and then I may suggest that we, just for simplicity sake, take up that staff direction first and then return back to Councilmember Gordon's motion here.
That would be fine with me. I just, whatever pathway gets us there, I just wanted the opportunity to consider both the staff direction and the, what is labeled as a substitute resolution, perhaps incorrectly, but before you all right now. So I'll defer to the President to get us on the proper pathway.
Thank you. And so Councilmember Gordon has moved this motion, which is before us by himself and the Council Vice President. This is an amended version of the Neighborhoods 2020 Framework, presented as a resolution before the City Council. I believe there are probably copies at the end here if anyone wants one of those. So as I mentioned, I think what I'll do then first is go ahead and take up this staff direction, which I will move on behalf of the authors, and then pause and recognize anyone who'd like to speak to this staff direction. And I'll just mention that this is taking a kind of a bigger picture look at how the city itself does community engagement. I may have some more comment, but I'll turn it over to Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. And I just want to thank the co-authors on this staff direction. What happened is, in the conversation around Neighborhoods 2020, citywide, the citywide community engagement policy got married into that conversation, and I think it was really necessary for us to separate those two, so that we are essentially, as a city enterprise, not essentially being absolved of responsibility for citywide engagement and saying it's Neighborhoods responsibility. But that is actually ours, and we need to own that as well. And so this staff direction really separates those two, so that we're able to really dig into that work from a city enterprise perspective. This also is in reflection of the concerns of the Neighborhoods 2020 Work Group III, which did a lot of work around laying the groundwork for a conversation around citywide community engagement policy. And so this is to also signal to them that their work was not in vain, that we are carrying that forward. It was a bigger conversation than Neighborhoods 2020, and so that is how that is reflected here. So I'm really excited to dig into this work. I think that it's powerful for us to actually, as a city enterprise, to say we're going to own city engagement, that this is something that is important to us, we're going to do business differently, and we're going to be thinking more about what does co-governing really look like from a participatory perspective. And so thank you to the co-authors for bringing this forward, and thank you to everyone who has taken the time to help lay the groundwork for it, for us to begin. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Cunningham. Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to show my appreciation for Councilmember Cunningham's work in starting to help us see this in a broader way. And I just wanted to point out the two pieces of the staff direction. The first is about conducting an enterprise-wide evaluation of how we currently do community engagement. One part of that is how we communicate as a city. And what we passed at the end of last year was the Communications Audit, and that is about how we communicate, but not necessarily how we engage. So this kind of makes a different, broader kind of work. The Communications Audit is in process, and the person that is doing that for us, or the company that is doing that for us, is probably not the right person for this kind of an evaluation. But how we communicate is one thing. How we evaluate our community engagement efforts is much broader. And I wanted to thank Councilmember Cunningham for recognizing that and making that part of the conversation. The second piece of the staff direction is about coming up with a citywide engagement policy, and that's something we've been talking about as a council with many people over time. And Neighborhoods are certainly a part of that, an important piece of that, as Work Group III helped us kind of suss out. But that's not the whole story. It's also about how every single city department acts, and that's why this has been modified accordingly. One of the outcomes of this policy, I hope, is some work that Councilmember Ellison and I have been working on about what it means to do fair consideration of legislation. So we, as policymakers, how do we, when we embark on a new initiative, come up with a way to consistently size the kind of engagement that's necessary, to share it with people who will be influenced by the decisions we make? And what is, what is that path? And so I think this pairs really nicely with future work on how we, as policymakers, develop rules and how we give fair consideration and fair notice to people about legislation. So that's kind of work that's maybe to come with Councilmember Ellison. I just wanted to put this into context of all the different moving pieces, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Palmasano. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you. I just wanted to add, as a city representative on Work Group III that had to do with citywide community engagement, I think the staff direction is in alignment with the work that they've been doing. There may even be a desire to have that group keep meeting to reflect on this external evaluation and see how it's going and weigh in on some recommendations for the future. And I think that could be critically important. I also appreciate that we've lifted this element outside of the original resolution, where it was buried, and it will be, we can look at that as kind of a separate significant thing. It's helped focus the framework resolution more closely on neighborhood organizations as well. So I was happy to work with the co-authors on this.
Thank you. I will add myself here to comment briefly as well, and just want to thank the three co-authors for each of their leadership on all of these related items. I'm excited about the idea of expanding our communications evaluation to think about how the city is doing community engagement. And I really take to heart the feedback that I've gotten as part of the Neighborhoods 2020 process, which is in part, hey, if you're asking neighborhood organizations to have more accountability and more goals around diversity and inclusion, what is the city itself doing to better reach those goals through our own engagement? And at the heart of it, this is part of what that is addressing, is taking responsibility for our own role in engaging and making sure we have the right resources in the right places to do a better job of engaging, particularly with communities that haven't typically been engaged or where there are some barriers to engagement. And we've done so much work in that direction, so this will be a place to collect what we've learned, to look at best practices, and see, again, to make sure that it's resourced correctly going forward. So I think of this as very long-term work over many years to come. And again, I'm very grateful for the leadership of Councilmembers Cunningham, Palmasano, and Gordon. Is there any other discussion on this staff direction? So then I think what I will do is then take the vote both on the motion to delete item 1.1 and to adopt this as essentially a substitute staff direction under that item. Is that, Mr. Clerk? Okay. All right. Then I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
That carries in that staff direction is adopted. That returns us back to Councilmember Gordon's substitute motion, which is here in front of us, and it is, I know, something that has a number of changes and amendments, so I just want to make sure my colleagues have the time they need to review it, but I also see if there is any discussion on this item. Councilmember Gordon.
So I would, I'd like to discuss it maybe and talk through it a little bit, and I'm making the assumption now that the motion is properly before us for consideration. So, okay, I've moved it. And this is a motion by Councilmember Jenkins and I. The copy in front of you will have some highlights on it, and I want to stop and talk on those. But first, just let me note that this is much streamlined and more concise resolution. Some of the details have been taken out in terms of specific things like what absolutely has to go in the bylaws, although we call out that there will be uniform requirements of bylaws that will be developed. Also, we took out almost all the whereas clauses. I think it went from 13 pages down to six. Part of the reduction in pages was because of the staff direction we just passed, so we moved out that part about the citywide community engagement effort, and we're seeing and recognizing that as separate work. I'll now just note some of the more significant changes. Some of them reflect amendments that were made in committee. The first one was actually adding another public purpose to neighborhood organizations. This is Public Purpose Four, creating a sense of place and celebrating community, something that our neighborhood organizations often do. We also clarified, and this was from the committee motion that passed, about the base funding, that the minimum neighborhood-based funding allocation will be $25,000. That's currently what it is. There's a few neighborhoods, I think four. If you get that amount, all the other neighborhoods get more than that. There was also some concerns we heard about discretionary funding that was going to the neighborhoods. We got some impact that it was getting too specific, so I deleted some terms. This is on page two, item number C, having to do with discretionary funding. Rather than say that they are available only for one-time projects or projects that could be potentially self-sustaining in the future, we just say they're available for projects unique to the neighborhood or area. That gives more discretion to the neighborhood organizations to determine. We still included the list of 11 ideas and some specifics. The third item that we heard a lot about during the community kind of involvement and discussion and public hearing had to do with the funding for community-based organizations. I think there was a significant fear and concern that we were, this would end up taking money away from neighborhood organizations because they don't know exactly how much they're going to get. We made an amendment in the committee, and it has been refined for this resolution. I will just read the two sentences that we're adding to clarify that, which is noted as 25% of the overall funding would go to community-based organizations, and this is what is in the amended resolution. Community-based organizations that receive funding from this program must partner with a neighborhood organization. Preference will be given to projects that work directly in collaboration with neighborhood organizations to accomplish neighborhood goals, including diversity goals. The requirement to partner with neighborhood organizations may be waived by the city coordinator if the coordinator determines that a suitable neighborhood organization cannot be found and that the funding will support work that meets our city's racial equity goals. The next change was also a change that came through the committee. It was to make the Neighborhood Election Day a voluntary thing that people could, neighborhood groups could participate in. I'll just note that the hope is that it's going to be such a big success that everyone will want to opt into that. It's seen as an opportunity for the city, Elections Department, and all of us to get turnout and get more people interested in participating in their neighborhood organizations, so could actually be a great pathway into diversifying those and strengthening them. And so just the fact that I'm supporting making them voluntary doesn't mean I don't think it's an idea worth trying, I just think this is the way to try it. The other, there are no more, I guess there's one more significant change in here that has to do with taking out a lot of information. It had to do with the Governance section. So the resolution that came to the committee had details about governance, and they were going to create two different bodies. One was, and this was a change actually from the draft that went out to the community, so the community saw that we were going to create an all-appointed advisory board to work with the council. That was preserved in some detail in the draft that came to the committee. I've taken out, and we've taken out all that detail, but we still call out that such a group will be created. But it's just giving one sentence, that NCR shall develop an enabling resolution for a new community engagement commission by August 26th, implementing, monitoring, and supporting the citywide engagement policy. It's in the other staff direction. So the details of that have been taken out. But we have maintained the details of the more significant change in governance, which was strengthening the NRP Policy Board, and we are adding eight neighborhood representatives to it. This was in the recommendation that came to the committee, but I just wanted to highlight it here for our purposes. And I believe that's the best introduction that I can come up with, an overview of the resolution. Hopefully, folks have had a chance to read it, and you can ask any questions if you have. I'm happy to hear views, and I think we can entertain amendments to it now that it's before us. And I did all that in six minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. I first just want to start with saying that we are all starting from a place of shared commitment. Over the last couple of weeks, it's been made really clear, at least within City Hall, that council members believe in and want to support neighborhood associations. Where our divide lies is how we best achieve that. First, I do not believe it is in the best interest of public trust and transparency for us to pass a resolution that has not been seen by the public in its current form, particularly since trust was broken during the process of the original resolutions development. I disagree with the notion that it is necessary and urgent for us to pass something today for the sake of sending a message to neighborhood organizations and city staff that we, as a council, are moving forward on something opposed to asking them to trust us that we will complete this work. As a Northside council member, I feel it is backward, this is backwards, because I can say us passing this resolution today is asking my community, a historically and presently marginalized community, to trust us, that we are going to course correct and address their valid concerns and issues at some point down the road. There is very little evidence that asking my community for that faith is well-founded. There has been tremendous work that has been done thus far on this work. However, the framework as it is operates from a deficit perspective. It holds, it focuses on holding bad actors accountable without clarity about how it will uplift and support high-functioning neighborhood organizations. For example, it cuts 25% off top of their funding automatically. Additionally, it lacks high-level program goals and outcomes, as well as a racial equity analysis. It is incredibly challenging to develop program guidelines without these foundational elements included in the framework. Ward four neighborhood organizations are doing amazing work. Neighborhoods like Falwell, Victory, and Jordan saw between a 26% and 41% decrease in violent crime last year. I believe this is largely due to the significant work led by neighborhood associations to connect neighbors, as well as community-led public safety efforts. Despite neighborhood associations in my ward being so strong in their work, my constituents who participated in the work groups all came back to report that they felt shut down and that their concerns and ideas were not addressed or included. This has done significant further damage to trust between Northside neighborhood organizations and the city. To pass the proposed framework now disregards the voice of the Northside Neighborhood Council, a Congress of Northside neighborhood organizations, and the will of the committee, which did not pass the resolution creating the framework. It was the will of the committee for the work of the staff direction, not the resolution to proceed. The staff direction serves three purposes: to bring in a third party to help support the process and reestablish trust in it as the program guidelines are developed; and to tighten up the framework and address gaps like overall programmatic goals and outcomes, a racial equity analysis beyond just the amount of people of color represented on the boards, as well as metrics for accountability; and to expand the base of participation to folks who are not currently involved in neighborhood organization and renters. I cannot support this new resolution for the reasons I have listed, but respect if that is the will of my colleagues. Depending on the will of my colleagues, I have either an amended staff direction to reflect changes based on conversations that I've had with you all, or an amendment to the new resolution being currently considered. I wanted to share, I spoke on it at committee of the whole, but I want to make sure that we have it here as well, that the updated staff direction reads as, "The city coordinator's office is directed to do the following: collaborate with the University of Minnesota's Center for Urban and Regional Affairs to complete the resident-led process of furthering the Neighborhoods 2020 framework and developing program guidelines at the collaborative level of engagement based on the IAP II's spectrum. Aspects of the work should include, but are not limited to: 1. Development of overall program goals and outcomes; 2. Metrics to measure progress towards goals; 3. Defining a racial equity analysis of neighborhood organization operations and activities; 4. Development of a logic model for the new Neighborhoods program that includes inputs, activities, outputs, and outcomes; 5. Convening of the governance and funding work groups and including additional stakeholders, such as, but not limited to, NRP Policy Board members, NCEZ commissioners, and members of the neighborhood organizations; 6. Throughout the process, there should be an emphasis on community members who are not currently engaged in neighborhood associations, as well as renters; 7. Identifying a budget-neutral structure for the city to best support neighborhood associations; skipping to, then 9. Developing, development of the Neighborhoods 2020 program guidelines; 10. Development of accountability measures for exclusionary practices. And as well as the body of work described above, it's expected to operate within the following parameters. The first is to operate within the $4.1 million currently allocated to neighborhood organizations. For the proposed program outcomes and goals, racial equity analysis, and any necessary amendments to the framework to align with the goals and racial equity analysis are to be published for public comment by July 1st, and then have those three components be brought before the Peace Committee on July 15th. And that CURA will meet bimonthly with internal city, an internal city steering committee that includes the NCR Director, the NCR Lead Staff for Neighborhoods 2020, the Peace Committee Chair, two council members, a representative from the mayor's office, the city CFO, and the city coordinator. The proposed guidelines and logic model are to be reported back to the Peace Committee on October 28, 2019, and will be posted at that time for public comment. The final draft is to go before the Peace Committee on November 18, 2019, with final approval by the city council on November 22, 2019. I will defer to my colleagues to vote on the new resolution before bringing forward either of these updates. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Cunningham. I just, I'll pause. I do want to just ask, I think we need copies or an emailed version of the staff direction that you just read, and I think the clerk probably had it at some point, but I just want to make sure that we all have the correct.
I wasn't sure if I should pass out the staff direction, or if I should pass it out as an addition to the new resolution is where I was a little bit confused. So I'll pass out now the staff, an updated version of the staff direction, and, sorry, I wasn't sure procedurally how, if we should vote on the new resolution and then address this, but I just wanted to bring this into the conversation as well. So I'll defer procedurally to how we should proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just to clarify, I believe you said there is a staff direction version of this, and separately, there is also an amendment version of this, which would be an amendment to the resolution that's before us.
Correct, because I wasn't, I wasn't sure the procedure, how we would move forward.
Okay, thank you. We have Councilmember Schrader in queue, and so we'll sort of work out the procedural and paperwork side of things as we do that, and I'll recognize Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm very lucky and get to represent some amazing neighborhoods, and they got that way not because of the people, because my neighbors and the neighbors before them stepped up to lead in the neighborhood organizations. And they didn't get there because of the rules and because of the bylaws. And one of the things, I will be supporting Councilmember Gordon's motion today, frankly, because I think we're running out of time. We do need something better. I think it's, it's a big disappointment for me that the framework was not more to neighborhoods. For me, the biggest thing is that this is not the discussion of the money. When we talk about what neighborhoods need and what neighborhoods could become, they only get that way by support from the city and not just on their own. So while I wish the framework could be just so much more, I saw this as something where we could get to dream and think about how, what's, how we could make the city through neighborhoods. And to really, I think all, many of us sitting up here believe that same thing, but unfortunately, this does not get there. And I hope the department, as well as other, the city departments working on this, take note, and we take these next six months to work on the trust that has been lost in many parts of the city, including parts of mine. But I think that we need to concentrate again on what's, how we're going to support neighborhoods financially, as well as with other resources.
Thank you. Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, President Bender. I'm going to be opposing this today, and I wanted to share a little bit about why I think it's important that we understand. I just don't have a constituency for a yes vote anywhere in my ward. I've heard from neighborhood leaders who are really invested in the neighborhood associations, who have said, "This is, this is not a good document, this doesn't represent us, we're not happy with this process, we want to see something different." I have heard from my constituents who feel alienated from neighborhood associations, who don't feel represented by them, and who want to see them held accountable in different ways so that they could participate in them, or say, "This doesn't do that, please vote no on this." I don't have a constituency for yes, so for me to represent my constituents, that's where I need to be. I really appreciate Councilmember Cunningham's adding the instruction to reach out to people who don't participate in neighborhood associations to really find out why. I think we have a lot of neighborhood associations who say it's really hard to get people involved. We owe it to them to find an answer about what's going wrong so that they can connect, because I don't think that it's childcare and translators. I think if the conversation's not about something that's relevant, it doesn't matter how much support you provide for people to come to a meeting to talk about something they don't care about. And we really need to connect better with what, you know, with how this works. And so I'm feeling very disappointed with this process and with this outcome. I think maybe we tried to make so many compromises that it ends up not accomplishing anything for anybody in the end, and so I, you know, I'm pretty frustrated with it. I have a feeling that it might pass today, and so in that spirit, I do want to at least try to amend this in, in one way that feels important, which is I want to offer an amendment to strike the language that I know was added in Peace Committee, that the minimum neighborhood-based funding allocation will be $25,000. And I think it's important because that's redistributive the wrong way. We have an equity framework for deciding how funding gets allocated, and it's based on how many people of color are there in neighborhoods? How many renters are there in neighborhoods? There's all kinds of factors that go into this formula. And if we look at the neighborhoods that don't meet any of the criteria, either in population or diversity, to get to 25,000, we are taking money out of the neighborhood associations that do meet those criteria that we want to invest in. And so if we're talking about equity, we need to be talking about distributing and investing money in communities according to a formula that does seem to make some sense. And this feels redistributive the wrong way, so I'm going to move an amendment to strike that language. Thank you.
Okay, so Councilmember Fletcher has moved the amendment he described, which is under 2A on page one of the resolution that's in front of us. Is there any, is there a second on Councilmember Fletcher's motion?
Second.
The motion is before us with a second. Is there any discussion on that amendment? Okay, seeing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
No.
Schrader.
No.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
No.
Palmasano.
No.
Gordon.
No.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
No.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are six ayes and six nays.
So that motion fails because they do not have a majority of the votes, and that returns us back to discussion on the resolution itself in front of us. Is there any other discussion or motions from council members? I'll pause and say that in discussions with the clerk and Councilmember Cunningham, Chair Cunningham has decided to move the staff direction before us, that, as a staff direction, so we'll take that up separately after the discussion of the resolution itself, and I'm, again, happy to take any further amendments or comments or discussion from council members. I don't see anyone now, so I'll add myself in queue and just want to make a couple of comments as myself, as Councilmember for Ward 10. I really feel a lot of alignment with comments that Councilmembers Cunningham and Fletcher have made, and there's a reflection, I think, which is that those of us who represent neighborhoods that are, have, you know, high populations of renters or folks of color or higher poverty than the city as a whole are facing a lot of stress in our communities and a lot of issues that are, that take time and effort to organize and that are complex. And it's hard, I think, to have a document that tries to look at neighborhood organizations across the city as a whole and adopt one kind of method of accountability or goals around diversity because the neighborhoods are so different from each other. And I have also struggled during my time in office with constituents who've become very frustrated, who live in neighborhoods that are receiving a lot of money because of their demographics, because they are neighborhoods that have vulnerable people. In Ward 10, that, that means, you know, I have neighborhoods where 90% of the folks in my community are renting their homes and are at extraordinary risk for displacement. I look out five years, and I worry that a lot of my constituents won't be able to afford to live in their community. And we've had neighborhood organizations that, where I've heard from constituents that they tried to go get involved, and they weren't, not only weren't welcomed, but were, felt really that they had been systematically excluded. And as Councilmember Fletcher mentioned, I don't, I haven't been able to either see here or frankly come up with myself, as a council member with all the other things on my plate, a solution for that. So I do continue to want to work together with folks to look for solutions for those kinds of problems, but I also just want to recognize that the complexity of organizing in neighborhoods that are facing stress and, really want to thank the folks who are doing that work. And I hear as well from neighborhood organizations that they feel like they're not being supported enough by the city. That's why I think this previous staff direction is important for us to be able to take a step back and look at the bigger picture, and as we look out over time, figure out how we can do a better job as a city of engaging the populations that are under stress and facing difficult challenges in their community. So I will also not be supporting the resolution that's before us, but I also look forward to continuing this bigger-picture work and building toward, I think, as Councilmember Cunningham said, our shared goals of making sure that our engagement is empowering and is reaching out to diverse communities in meaningful ways. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ellison?
No.
Goodman?
Aye.
Palmasano?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Kano?
No.
Reich?
Aye.
Fletcher?
No.
President Bender?
No.
There are seven ayes and five nays.
That passes, and so the resolution itself has been adopted, which brings us back to Councilmember Cunningham's staff direction, which is before us here. And Councilmember Cunningham went through this in detail and read it for us, so I'll see Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. So I think it's just particularly important to name for my community to know that since this has, this framework has passed with the concerns that are unaddressed, that business is being done differently because I'm here at the table, and I'm here at the table, and what is in this staff direction is for the work of KIRA, which is a trusted community partner, to dig into the work further, to have us address the program goals and outcomes as well as the racial equity analysis that is missing from the framework, and that they will be bringing that back for any necessary amendments to the framework. So this is just us, this is just the first layer, and then there will be additional work. This is not the end of the road. The work that will be brought back will have a lot of the concerns that have been expressed to me and through the public hearing. That is where we will be able to address that. So this is not the end. This is like, not the end-all, be-all. This framework will be tightened up. The gaps that are currently have, that have been identified will be addressed, and we will continue this conversation moving forward. There will be lots of decisions that are going to be made between now and the end of next year when the money, the consolidated TIF district dollars run out. So there will be lots of decisions that are made throughout, so this is just the first one. And then next, we will be taking what is here and then bringing forward what KIRA and the internal city steering committee brings forward for recommendations for amendments to what we just passed. So I just want to let folks know, what just passed is not the end-all, be-all. It's not the final decision that's being made. And, and I know that the, it's, it's backwards to ask for marginalized communities like ours to, to have faith that we're going to course correct, but I'm at the table, and I'm going to do everything that I can to make sure that we, that this is course corrected and that the concerns that are addressed by the well, high-functioning neighborhoods in North Minneapolis, that your leadership is represented here in the framework as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our President, I, I am, I'm, I'm open to supporting the staff direction. I was definitely open to supporting it had the resolution not passed, but given that the resolution has passed, and I just wanted some clarity from my colleague, are we setting up KIRA to possibly fail in their work? They are a trusted community partner. I don't want to set them sort of on a mission to make, make suggestions to a resolution that is supported by, by this body. And so just wanted some clarity, because I'm, because while I'm open to supporting it, I am tempted to vote against it just to, just, just because I don't want to, you know, mislead my constituents or set up KIRA to fail, given that the resolution did pass. So just throwing out that concern.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you. I'll just note that in the resolution that we just passed, we approved doing something a lot like this. There's a section there that says that our staff will work with a consultant or consultants to develop program guidelines, including a logic model with inputs, activities, outcomes, metrics for evaluation and monitoring. Working with the consultants, our staff will develop templates for diversity action plan and outreach plan, ensure racial equity focus in alignment with the city's strategic racial equity action plan. And that work was to be completed according to the date we just gave by November 4th, so I'd like to, a chance to at least compare that date with this. It also has a paragraph that we just approved, that in partnership with neighborhood organizations and working with the consultant or consultants, our staff will conduct an internal review of its services and support to neighborhood organizations with a focus on budget-neutral options. And there's a little bit more in there as well. So I could say, we already covered this. Why do we need a special staff direction? Or I could say, oh, well, this is already supported by the resolution, so if it's the will of the body, why don't we move forward with these more specifics and drilling down into it? I'm, I, I choose the latter, probably. I have a couple of questions about, is this going to cost us money? Have we approved a funding source for this? Is it our practice to identify a consultant to work with this soon at the council level before we've given any opportunity for research? So I have some misgivings about the specificity, maybe, and the depth of the staff direction, but I will tell you honestly that at the committee level, I was willing to support a, a modified framework that addressed community needs, and then digging in to say how we're going to actually develop it so the program addresses those better. So I see this staff direction coupled with the framework that passed as a potential compromise that would require, and I know some people voted against the framework, but now it's there, but would require those that maybe don't like this staff direction too much to recognize this might be an opportunity for us to come together under something that we can all live with, thus recognizing that each of us individually brings a very important perspective to this, and it's important that we listen to them and honor what they do. We each have an election certificate. We each have our constituents. We have to give a voice to and represent, and sometimes it's worth making a compromise as a body so that we think we're moving forward better together as an entity representing the whole city. So that's a little bit of a pitch for supporting the staff direction, even if you've got some misgivings.
Thank you. Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. I think sort of extending what Councilmember Gordon had shared in terms of the specifics, you know, I just don't know if we've ever really picked a consultant at the DAS without it having been vetted through the department that would interface with it. It's just sort of a transparency, accountability. Usually you have an RFQ or an RFP. A scope of services is reviewed and drafted even before that went out, and it seems like we're picking someone in advance of that work. And I say that not to disregard the work that's outlined in the staff direction. As a matter of fact, I say that because I think what's outlined in that staff direction is so important, and so how we get there and how we do that work is just as important as the work itself. So I have reservations about the specificity, but not the intent or purpose.
Thank you. Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. So I just wanted to address a couple of concerns that were brought up. First, KIRA is, has submitted a contract to the city coordinator's office. It is beneath $175,000, so there is not a need for a formal RFP process. Instead, it would go through the Target Market vendors. And since it's specialized, then being able to work with them, because they do have the specialized skill set, that is the process. So just to share that, and I have actually confirmed that process before today. And then as well as to address my colleague from the Northside's concerns, we, it is possible that KIRA could bring forward an amazing body of work, and then this council voted down. Like, that is a possibility. And I, and I think, though, that it's, it's our work to be able to make sure that we are building together, because I, in the conversations that I've had with NCR staff and leadership, it's an iterative process. And so I, I believe that this is not the end-all, be-all, that there's openness. There has been openness about working with KIRA. And, and so I would hope that my colleagues would be open to the next iteration of what is brought forward, and particularly because of the fact that it's addressing concerns from particularly marginalized communities. And so I ask for my colleagues at large to keep an open mind, because as we know, like, this process is going to, it started a few years ago, and it's going to continue through the end of next year. So what we bring forward in July is just an addition, an extra layer of details and refinement of the framework, because we really got to tighten it up. We got to address some of the concerns and some of the gaps, like a racial equity analysis. Like, that is, that is complex work. It's specialized work, and KIRA has the skill sets to really be able to have an explicit framework. Speaking to Councilmember Fletcher's, you know, concern about a one-size-fits-all approach, I think that may have been mentioned a couple of times, like, being able to then refine this one-size-fits-all, including equity, drilling down into it further. The specificity with naming KIRA specifically is because, A, they have the specialized skill set and are able to, we do not have to go through the formal RFP process because the contract is under $175,000, as well as they are a trusted community partner. Northside neighborhoods, when they have been able to, unable to access resources and support from the city, have gone to KIRA. And so, so that is a, a relationship that has already been established. I definitely hear and understand, but have done my due diligence to make sure that, that we're crossing all, covering all of our bases and making sure that this is as transparent and by the process as possible. So I know that's my second time on speaking on this, so I don't know if I'll be able to address any further concerns that might come up along the way, but I do ask for my colleagues to please support this staff direction. There are very valid, well-founded concerns from my community, as well as other communities that are predominantly folks of color, renters, concentrated areas of poverty. So I do ask for folks to please support this and for us to be able to continue the work forward of getting that racial equity analysis, getting those high-level program goals, and then amending as necessary what we've passed here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cunningham, could you email me your staff direction?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilmember Jenkins, Council Vice President.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I just want to thank all of my colleagues for being so deeply engaged in this process and, and very thoughtful, I thought, Councilmember Cunningham's initial statements that we all want to see neighborhoods succeed and want to ensure that we are supporting neighborhoods, we're just not as, as aligned on the best ways to get there. Having stated that, I supported the, the resolution, and I will be supporting the subsequent staff direction. I think they both work together to get us to the outcomes that we are hoping to see to the point of KIRA's recommendations being received. It's my understanding from the staff direction that there will be a, a body of people working together, the, the council, the city coordinator's office, the mayor's office, neighborhood representatives, along with KIRA. And so I believe that that collaborative process should bring forward some recommendations that we can all live with. And so, that being said, I will be supporting this staff direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion from councilmembers on Councilmember Cunningham's resolution? I'll just say, I see Councilmember Fletcher in queue. I'll just say here that I'm, I've been open to supporting this and really appreciative of Councilmember Cunningham's work and leadership. I do also want to note, as Councilmember Gordon said, that a lot of the language that has been incorporated into the resolution that had passed just now did come from work that Chair Cunningham has offered, either in the staff direction or in discussions at committee. And I think that piece was, was found on page three of the resolution for councilmembers who may want to refer to that. I have been wondering if we might consider a couple of small changes to the staff direction. One, just maybe taking out the specificity of KIRA with councilmembers raising concerns about process and just using our more sort of typical process that staff would, would use to contract with an outside vendor. And then I also just want to offer this idea that perhaps there would be an opportunity to align the dates that are in the portion that Councilmember Gordon read, that was the November 4th date, using, sort of adding that here so that that is reflected and that there's no confusion, and perhaps, you know, using these July dates as a, as a interim or a check-in period for some of the work, and then that bigger piece coming through in November. So I won't move those. I just wanted to describe some of the thoughts I had about how we might be able to get some of the comments that have been voiced so far into the staff direction. Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, President Bender, and I would, I would support those changes. I think it does make sense. I particularly think it makes sense, we should at least ask KIRA, now that the resolution has passed, if it still feels like it makes sense, and, you know, and make sure that they're available and engaged, you know, given the way things are developing. So I, I think that makes sense. I also think it's hard to imagine somebody would seem more qualified for the work, given their deep work with neighborhoods over time, assuming that they are still interested. So I would expect that to work. I, I'm supportive of this. I think one of the really important things here is that this is a staff direction to the city coordinator's office, and I think I really wanted to see that from my perspective. In retrospect, one of the things that we probably should have done differently is that usually when we've done a look at a, at a department, we have not asked the department to do that self-analysis. And I think, and sometimes that takes some options off the table in terms of what you're willing to think about, and I think that's fair and reasonable and, and, you know, so having a little bit of an external voice, you know, getting engaged in this next step of the process to see if some other ideas come up, makes a lot of sense to me. So on that basis, I'll support it, and I would rather we try to amend the staff direction than, than just lean on the language from the resolution.
Thank you. Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just add that we do already have a, a standing contract with the University of Minnesota to help us research ideas, thoughts, review plans and such. And so I feel like the, the specificity of KIRA being included in this actually meets that standard, since we do have the standing contract with the University of Minnesota.
Thank you. Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll just note that, though there's a strong association between KIRA and the U of M, they are not the same entity. And so in the, in the spirit of Council President's adjustments that she suggested and Fletcher, I think reiterated, I would also, if those modifications were a part of the staff direction, I'd feel comfortable supporting it. So I don't know if the clerk, do we need to make that clear, that we wish to amend the staff direction per Council President's comments?
Council President had offered amendment, a second, and a vote would make that happen.
Thank you. Thank you both. I, I'll defer to Councilmember Cunningham if he wants to make those amendments or has any further comment on the discussion so far.
Could that be considered a friendly amendment?
I think it's best just to move the amended.
Okay, that's fine. Then I move to amend the staff direction to change the language from specifically identifying KIRA to have instead it to say a consultant. And I have sent that updated staff direction to my colleagues as well as the clerks.
Councilmember Cunningham, could I ask a question there to, perhaps this was already at the end here? I just want to make sure that the, and maybe this, I see Councilmember Gordon is in queue next as well. If there's a, this November 18th date, is that reflected in the, is that similar timeline that's reflected in the resolution? Or is there a need to also add something that's more clearly aligning this with what was in the resolution that passed? That's an open question. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. I think that it's in the reasonable timeframe, but I'm going to defer to the clerk to see if they've looked at the dates and compared, and I think that's going to create problems for staff because we have so many different dates listed. Is there a way to align them better, if that's all right? Can I, Mr. Carl, would you?
Madam President, I think the clerk's office has a clear understanding of the need of the council to reconcile the dates that are slightly different within the two versions, and we're happy to do that with the direction I understood to be, to make and we're happy to do that with the direction I understood to be, to make those follow the same timeline that is within the resolution that's already been passed. And so that slightly modifies the language that would be in the staff directive.
Thank you. Seems like it covered it. So then I'll just clarify, we have before us an amendment from Councilmember Cunningham to the previously introduced staff direction, and that is just that change to change the language that had said KIRA to a consultant. Is there a second to that motion amendment?
Second.
So that has been moved and seconded. I'll just see if there's any comment on that amendment. Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? That carries. So that has been amended and brings us back to the staff direction. Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Some of my concerns with this may have just been addressed. I think it's important to lift up and make sure that we are not doing deficit-based work like Councilmember Cunningham has helped us to steer. I appreciate and have worked hard for an ongoing relationship with the University of Minnesota, but I appreciate us taking out that specific language because KIRA is a little bit different. I also have issues with no-bid contracts and monies allocated this way that I haven't had a chance to go and investigate and see. So from the budget chair's perspective, I'm just curious, and maybe someone can help me with, where is this money coming from? Is it coming from the NCR department's overhead? Where will this money come from? And I also wanted to point out, to the point of having a working, ongoing relationship with the University of Minnesota, that an entity like KIRA might be ideally suited for part one of the staff direction that we passed, the very first part of the staff direction of an enterprise-wide evaluation of the community engagement efforts that currently exist. I think that might be where KIRA's work might be best focused. But I'm just really curious about where the money for something like this is coming from, and I just want to be clear about that.
Thank you, Councilmember. I have been trying to avoid having our staff come up and answer questions, which starts to turn our council meetings into a little bit of more like committee work, but if we need to do that and have our coordinator come up and answer that question, I'm happy to do that. I could also, Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. I can go ahead and speak to it based on conversations that I've had with staff, so we don't have to put them on the spot. So a portion of it will be coming from NCR, and then the coordinator is helping us to be able to figure out how we can fill in the gaps that, that might be there. So that's why the staff direction is to the coordinator's office, is for it to be able to be more flexible and for us to be able to find the funding that's necessary for it. But I will look to the coordinator to see if that, so I, sorry, I did put you on the spot still.
I see coordinate. Thank you.
Chair Bender, members of the committee and members of council, I just want to say that as in keeping with everything that we, that we receive and any staff directions that we get, we will of course be looking at what that looks like. I have spoken with the director of NCR. They have some small availability of funds to do that. We are looking internally as well, but frankly, it's going to depend on scope, as in anything, just like the first staff direction and this staff direction. We will look at scope, we will see what we get, and we will certainly endeavor to make it happen within our own resources. Traditionally, staff looks at staff savings or perhaps they deprioritize projects. If there is an issue, we will come forward to council, but know that we have started identifying those funds.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon.
I just wanted to note that we should assume that if it does not come out of the existing budget as we approved, that staff will have to come back and ask us to amend the budget. And as we heard, they think there's wiggle room within their existing budget to find these resources, at least that's how I interpret that, or maybe there's clear alignment. I won't call it wiggle room, but there's already alignment that would allow for this. And if, and I just want, I liked that everybody was nodding. I wanted to be clear that if it looks like we're going to be doing something that's not in the approved budget, they will come back and then we'll have to back up our words with some dollars to make sure that we can do that.
Thank you. Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to note that if there are budget impacts for the staff direction, then maybe I think, once we have it finalized, it should go through Ways and Means for approval. I'd like it to be routed that way, just informally, and I just wanted to state that.
Thank you. I think that's something we can do that way, or we can also potentially take an official action to refer it to Ways and Means.
Madam Chair, I don't think it has to be official, but as long as we've stated it here and that's our intent, then I'm comfortable with that. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the staff direction? I don't see any. I do want to pause before asking the clerk to call the roll on this, that, you know, we've had a long, long discussion here and a number of things coming forward, which is not unique in such a complex and important multi-year process. I just want to take the time again to thank particularly Chair Cunningham for his leadership and all the council members who've been so engaged in this and who will be continuing to work on this going forward. So thank you all so much for your thoughtful leadership and collaboration. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries, and that has been adopted. Thank you all. This brings us to the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee report, which is next, and that will be presented by the Chair, Councilmember Conno.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a very lengthy report with one item today. And before you is a contract with Hennepin County Human Services and Public Health Department for mental health services, and I stand by for any questions as I bring this forward for the full council to consider.
Thank you. Councilmember Conno has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion on that item? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries, and that is adopted. Next, we have the report from the Ways and Means Committee presented by the Chair, Councilmember Worsami.
Thank you, Madam President. The Ways and Means Committee has seven items to get approved for today. Item number one is a contract with Baker Tilly and Wildcard Corp. for Information Technology and Cybersecurity Audit. Item number two is a contract amended with HCM Architects for Minneapolis Police Department Warehouse Project. Item number three is a bid for the public service project. This is for the drywall and fireproofing. Item number four is a request for proposal for investment management services. Item number five is a gift acceptance from Bloomberg Philanthropies for lodging and food-related expenses for the Stockholm Biocar Project Meeting. Item number six is a gift acceptance from Rocky Mountain Institute for Travel Lodging and Food-Related Expenses for the Solar Energy Innovation Symposium. And the final item is a gift acceptance from Simpson Housing Services, Inc., and this is for the Navigation Center, and I move approval of all seven items.
Councilmember Worsami has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries, and that is adopted. Next, we have the report from the Ways and Means Committee presented by the Chair, Councilmember Worsami.
Thank you, Madam President. The Ways and Means Committee has seven items to get approved for today. Item number one is a contract with Baker Tilly and Wildcard Corp. for Information Technology and Cybersecurity Audit. Item number two is a contract amended with HCM Architects for Minneapolis Police Department Warehouse Project. Item number three is a bid for the public service project. This is for the drywall and fireproofing. Item number four is a request for proposal for investment management services. Item number five is a gift acceptance from Bloomberg Philanthropies for lodging and food-related expenses for the Stockholm Biocar Project Meeting. Item number six is a gift acceptance from Rocky Mountain Institute for Travel Lodging and Food-Related Expenses for the Solar Energy Innovation Symposium. And the final item is a gift acceptance from Simpson Housing Services, Inc., and this is for the Navigation Center, and I move approval of all seven items.
Councilmember Worsami has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Is absent.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
Those items carry and are adopted. Finally, we have the report from the Zoning and Planning Committee given by the Chair, Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam President. The Zoning and Planning Committee will have two items for approval today. The first is the approval of rezoning for 5043 Irving Avenue South, and the second is the approval of rezoning for 1906 through 1914 Queen Avenue North, as well as 1911 through 1915 Penn Avenue North. I move approval of these items.
Councilmember Schrader has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Worsami. I'm sorry, Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
Those items carry, and the report is adopted. Next, we have the Introductions and Referrals Calendar. We have two items today. First, pursuant to notice, Councilmember Worsami moves to introduce, give first reading to, and refer to the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee, the subject matter of an ordinance to amend the building code related to sustainability thresholds on certain new construction. And second, pursuant to notice, Councilmember Ellison moves to introduce, give first reading to, and refer to the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee, the subject matter of an ordinance to amend the housing code related to the addition of first right of refusal for the sale of affordable housing. Are there any questions from council members on either of those introductions or comments? I'm going to pause. There's a comment or question here, and I just want to make sure we get these described. Councilmember Schrader.
Sure, I'm just, I'm going to hand this, I think there was different sponsors of those ordinances, but I think speaking as a sponsor of both of those, I think there's enough love to go around if we want to add people on.
Thank you, Councilmember Schrader. Thank you. I see in the printed agenda the correct authors, so I will just reread the introductions. So first, pursuant to notice, Councilmembers Gordon and Schrader moved to introduce the subject, are introducing the subject matter of an ordinance to amend Title V of the Code of Ordinances related to the building code for first reading and referral to the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee related to sustainability thresholds on certain new construction. And the second is pursuant to notice by Fletcher and Schrader to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance relating to the Housing Neatness Code for first reading and referral to the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee, adding the first right of refusal to the sale of affordable housing. So I will see if there's any questions on those introductions. Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, say no. That carries, and those are introduced and referred to the proper committees in the next cycle. And thank you, Councilmember Schrader, for that clarification. Finally, we have announcements before we adjourn to our closed session. Are there any announcements from council members? Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. I know we got the heads-up last meeting regarding Artur World, but the event's so big it deserves two announcements, and it'll be from Friday through Sunday. And I just will note, you know, every year there might be something new, and this year we will have a new building to join the constellation of buildings that make up the bulk of the event with the studio spaces. And this is, I believe it's called Flux. It's at Monroe and Lowry. And what's significant about this, this is the first studio building that is owned by the artists themselves, and so check it out and support their, their effort.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to introduce and note that the newly-appointed Chair of the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority is with us today. I don't think I noticed that he had arrived during my committee report. So this is Shamarkey Isa, and I think it's significant that he was here for this, and he attended the whole meeting and got to learn a lot more about how we work. So welcome and so glad to have you here.
Thank you. Any further announcements? I don't see any, so then I will look for a motion to adjourn to our closed session to discuss the two litigation matters that are on our agenda. The one is the rental license revocation for Stephen Friends, and the other is a litigation matter of James Clark.
Madam Chair, I move that we adjourn this meeting to closed session.
Is there a second? All in approval, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, say no. That carries, and we are adjourned to the closed session. Thank you so much, everyone.